Good evening. We'd like to call the order the regular scheduled meeting of Griffin City Commission for Tuesday, October 25th, 2011. Our invocation will be given by Commissioner Ward, and we would like to invite Troop 77 to come up and lead us in our pledge of allegiance, if they'll come up at this time.
Let us pray. Father, we are here today to ask for your blessing and guidance in the performance of our duties as elected officials. We pray for strength, love, knowledge, and understanding. Help us to recognize and solve the problems that are presented. Make our solutions fair and just to the best interests of everyone. Help us to overcome our shortcomings and keep us united as a team to work for the betterment of the city of Griffin and its people. We pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. And our scouts, come on forward, please, fellas. And if you would lead our audience now in our pledge to the flag and our pledges, our flag is here. So, okay, who's gonna take charge? All right, go ahead.
(inaudible)
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all. All right, young men, tell us who, what your names are. Jeremy Taylor?
Tatum.
Tatum, okay. Eric Harris. Okay, and Troop 77, where do you meet? The VFW Post, great, great. Well, we're glad to have you tonight, and thank you for leading us in our pledge.
Madam Chair, before we go further, may I move to amend the agenda?
Please.
I move that we amend the agenda by adding, adding item number 18 as presented here for us this evening.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to amend the agenda to include item number 18. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous. Thank you. All right, at this time, we will recognize Griffin Power for receiving the 2011 Safety Award from Electric Cities of Georgia, Director of Electric, of Electric Bill Boshel Address. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It's a great pleasure in presenting this award tonight. If I could have everybody from Electric Cities come up real quick. Everybody? What this award is, there's 49 cities within Electric Cities, and there are certain cities that got this award. There's only three out of the 49 that got this award, Griffin being one of them. This is what the, we've been distinguished as Electric City Safety First City, and a lot of stuff goes in it. This is very, very special to me that this team standing behind me has been given this award. I've gone to two funerals of friends who have been killed by this business, and that means everybody behind me is dedicated to that not happening. And I personally thank each and every one of you for working safe and having that safety first mentality. So, Mike, if I'd like to present this ECG Safety First Award to Griffin Power.
All right.
We appreciate it. Like I said, we got a good team behind us. These guys work hard, and they do look out for each other.
Thank you, Mike. I'm glad to see you survived your hot dog.
You're one of the guys. And it's the team as a whole. I mean, system operations, everything, everything goes into the safety first, no one gets hurt mentality. So, don't go nowhere.
Right, because now you're next on the agenda for to accept a certificate of recognition from Electric Cities of North Carolina in recognition of the mutual aid support from Griffin Power provided to help several cities recover from damage resulting from Hurricane Irene. Same group of fellows, huh?
Same group. This is another award, the, as you know, Hurricane Irene came through this year, and we sent individuals to North Carolina. And a lot of these guys don't know, but I received calls from the North Carolina Public Power Authority with special thanks and pulled out Griffin Power individually for their work ethic and the way you guys performed while you were out of town. So, I, you know, they should get the special recognition for, you know, a lot of times they go out of town and some, some cities, it's a party. These guys worked their butts off. And, and they were safe, and they came home. And people forget also, when, you know, when they're out of town working these storms, the wives, the children, the families left at home, and it's the team that brings them home safe and alive. So, I thank you very much. And here's another award from the North Carolina Public Power Neighbors that thank you personally for your work at Hurricane Irene.
That was wonderful.
I would just like to add, too, a lot of times when the weather's bad, y'all going in the house, we're coming out. These guys perform their best when the weather's bad.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. At this time, we'll consider proclamation recognizing November 2011 as National Hospice and Palative Care Month.
Madam Chair, I move we approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, do we have someone here to receive this proclamation? Okay, if not, we will make note of the record that we have issued this proclamation. Thank you. At this time, the chairperson opens floor to comments from the audience. Comments should relate to a specific agenda item not listed on the agenda for our public hearing or to a concern within the jurisdiction of the city. Commission meetings serve the purpose of conducting city business and are not a forum for the unlimited expression of opinion. The chairperson reserves the right to limit comments to matters germane to city business and may refer speakers to the city manager or other staff for resolution. Having said that, is there anyone on my left who would like to come forward and make a comment? Is there anyone on my right who would like to come forward? Okay, if not, we will go into our public hearings. Public hearings are conducted to allow public comment on specific advertised issues such as rezoning, ordinances, policy development, operating budgets, and other legislative actions to be considered by the city commission. Item numbers before is to receive comments regarding a request or variance from Section 503.3E physical requirements of the city of Griffin zoning ordinance to reduce the front yard setback from 50 feet to 28 feet for the property located at 805 Hillcrest Avenue. Frederick, Will take charge.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening.
This is variance application 11V ARO8 for 805 Hillcrest Avenue. The request is to reduce the side, the front yard setback from 50 feet to 28 feet to allow for the construction or improvement for detached. Staff has reviewed the request as it relates to the zoning, the variance standards, standards addressing staff report. Staff recognized that this has no detrimental effect to the adjacent properties or the property itself. The adjacent neighbors have submitted petitions in support of the applicant's request. Staff recommends approval of the reduction in the front yard setback from 50 to 28 feet. And Mr. Golden is here to speak on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so anyone who wishes to come and speak on this subject, please come forward.
Hello, I'm Bill Golden. This, this particular house that's on a corner lot, and this, and this setback is, is on the side of the house. And I have some pictures here of the structure that's already there. We hope to improve.
Are they like these? Yes. Mr. Golden, if you'll give us your address for the record, we would appreciate it.
313 Ashford Place.
313 Ashford Place. Okay, thank you.
No, Ashford Place is a little better than mine.
[laughing]
But it, but it will approve. We're gonna try to have this look as much as we can like a house. And we contacted the neighbors that would be in direct view of this, and we haven't had any opposition to it that I'm aware of.
Okay, very good. This is a public hearing. Are there any other comments concerning this property? Are there any questions from the commissioners?
Are there gonna be doors or garage doors or anything on this structure?
Yes, there will be. Not, not a front door, I'm sorry. There will not be. There'll be a, there'll be a back door on it. This, it'll have.
Could it just be an open entrance?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners? We thank you, sir. All right. Item number five is to receive comments regarding a request for a special use permit to allow for the utilization of the property located at 223 Kentucky Avenue for a community center that will serve as an enrichment area for the neighborhood. The property is properly, is presently zoned high-density residential, and a special use permit is required to designate the applicant's property for service use. Frederick will address.
Frederick, if you'll go one second. My father and his property, adjacent to his property, so I'll be abstaining from discussion on this matter.
This is a special use request, application 11S U P O 3. The applicant's representative ministry is requesting approval of special use permit to allow for neighborhood services of community center and playground to be utilized by the surrounding kids and families on the Kentucky street. We reviewed this request. The planning and zoning board recommended approval of the request. With one condition by staff, and staff recommended approval of the request. We see this as being a positive sign in this area. As you know, this area's been hit by a lot of foreclosures, especially with the multi-family structures in the area. This will provide a positive asset for the community, and staff recommended approval of the request, as such, the planning and zoning board.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone present who would like to come and make a comment about it?
May I ask a favorite question first? Oh, okay, I guess the owner's coming or the applicant. But as you said, both staff and the zoning board recommend approval with the special condition, no retail or service use. I just wanna make sure that the applicant understands that condition and is okay with it.
Please come forward, sir.
Frederick, one also has abstained. I own a piece of property there.
Hey, good afternoon. I'm David Dodd and reside at 700 Woodland Avenue here in Griffin.
Okay.
And just thankful for Frederick and his cooperation here in the efforts that we're going to hopefully allow you guys to see our way. We wanna really dig into the community there at 223 Kentucky Avenue for service purposes only. Basically, the goal is to partner with the kids and the families overall there for educational purposes. Someday, we hope for job placement, just, just doing life together with the community there at Kentucky Avenue, and are eager to do that, so we'd certainly ask you to, please let us move forward with.
All right. Are there any questions from the other commissioners? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any other people who would like to come forward? Okay, if not, we have concluded our public hearing. All right, we now are into the consent agenda to consider approval of minutes of the regular scheduled meeting on October the 11th, 2011.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Somebody else, is that correction?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the, the minutes as presented. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous, Judy. Thank you. Consider second and final reading of an amendment to Chapter 6, Alcoholic Beverages of the City of Griffin Code of Ordinances.
Madam Chair, I move we approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? All right, the vote is six one, Judy. Thank you. All right, item, we're now down to our regular agenda. Consider request for variance from Section 503.3E physical requirements of the city of Griffin zoning ordinance to reduce the front yard setback from 50 feet to 28 feet for the property located at 805 Hillcrest Avenue. Do I have a motion?
I think we approve. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous. Thank you. Item number nine, consider request for special use permit to allow for the utilization of the property located at 223 Kentucky Avenue for a community center that will serve as an enrichment area for the neighborhood. The property is presently zoned high-density residential A, and a special use permit is required to designate the applicant's property for service use. Do I have a motion?
A motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve.
May I?
Yes, with the condition.
With the condition, please.
Right.
I'll second that.
All right, as presented to us by the Planning and Zoning Board and Department. All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, those opposed?
Abstained.
You abstain, abstain. We have one, two extensions, two extensions. Five?
They're abstained.
Zero two. Thank you. Item number 10, consider approval of the city of Griffin Spalding County Neighborhood Stabilization Program grant, award package, and authorize the chairman of the board of commissioners and, and are his destiny to sign and execute the award package to be returned to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. Frederick, would you like to add anything to this?
Well, this is just a second installment of our neighborhood stabilization program for us to go after foreclosed properties. We are the recipient. The land bank will be the sub-recipient of these funds, and we'll oversee those in conjunction with the Department of Community Affairs.
Okay, are there any questions from the, go ahead.
Are these, these funds designated strictly for the city of Griffin, or are they gonna be used outside the city of Griffin?
They continue on with the program, the neighborhood stabilization one that we did with that obligation that basically city and county.
So, it's a joint?
Still a city and county grant.
Right, it always is.
Clear the oversea of the grant, but it still can be put to city and county.
All right, you.
Chair, I make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous, Judy. Thank you. Item number 11, consider approval of an amendment to the 457B Deferred Compensation Plan, which requires governmental 457B plans to be amended to add certain provisions of the HEROES Earnings Assistance Relief Act of 2008 and the workers, the Worker Retiree and Employer Recovery Act of 2008. Miles will address. Wow, Miles.
Now move we approve while he's addressing.
All right, we have a motion to approve while he's standing there, and a second. All those in favor? Without any discussion? All right, it is 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, enough to read it, Miles. Item number 12, consider first reading of an ordinance amendment to Section 90D 61 Traffic and Vehicles, Article 3 Speed Zone, to lower the speed limit on Hillcrest Avenue from 35 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Give you a quick history. The, one of the residents requested this post-speed limit signs, which ended up at 35 miles per hour, which was excessive, so the police did a traffic study and everything, and this is the recommended.
Right, and it's only after the study, this, this recommendation can come, far as the public.
Actually, that posting was an error.
Yeah, I guess that's all you have to do.
I think it should've been 25 miles anyway, because it is a residential.
Okay.
Street. So, that's, you know, several years ago, we went through the city in its entirety, and all residential streets other than collectors and arterials, which that is not either one of.
All right, now say that again, Drew.
All right, all residential streets other than collector streets or arterial streets. The arterials are the, mostly your highways, higher speed streets. Your collectors are the immediate streets like Maple and East College, Crescent probably, Solomon, Poplar, these collector streets. The rest, if they're in a residential area, speed was supposedly set at 25 miles an hour. If it's not in a residential area and not a collector or arterial street, this minimum speed is 30 miles an hour. So, I.
This will remove any confusion?
Yes, and the chief and I have talked about this. I think there are problems all around the community. We need to just go back, spend some time, and try to straighten those out.
And looking at this list of other streets on that you provided, there's several that question marks are raised.
I think that list has gotten commingled from the radar list on streets in which the police department run radar. I think they got.
I would think it looks like it has.
Yeah, and I think that's what's happened over time, but we'll get it straightened out of potential.
Because you, it covers the entire city, it looks like.
Right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Did we vote?
Yeah.
Hmm?
We didn't vote.
We didn't vote. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, it is unanimous, Judy. Thank you. Item number 13, consider the purchase of 14 Motorola digital cameras in the amount of $5,500 from Harris County Sheriff's Office. One additional Motorola license for the existing server in the amount of $65. Installation of the cameras with labor by Transcom in the amount of $3,220, and by resolution amend the budget accordingly.
Move we approve, and I have a question.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Okay, ask your question.
Chief, I'm assuming this is a, a good deal compared to new ones?
Yes, there's a, there's surplus in 20 cameras, and we're pretty much buying all 20, but I had those pinch tested at, at Transcom, and we have 14 working systems out of 20, so we'll have to make repairs to fix what we already have. We have 26 Motorola cameras of the same type right now. They're very complete, and then we have some digital alley cameras above that. This will take us to 49 cameras in our market control corps. And then last year, y'all threw four in 2010 with grant money that have just been installed, digital alley. So, and I have another grant, JAG grant, for the same thing in 2011 that I need to bring to y'all next month. I will bring down to about eight cars without any car cameras. And for the price that I'm paying Harris County for these surplus cameras that work, I can only buy two digital alley cameras.
Great.
And we'd like to mention that this comes from the confiscated account.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We appreciate you doing that.
So, what would it take to get you to the, to every car? What are we talking about for the eight remaining?
Well, you can price yourself at, let's see, it's about $16,795 for third.
Ooh, wow.
Didn't, did Harris County get this through a grant? What they did is they have surplus this equipment to replace this equipment with all digital alleys that yesterday they got a grant for to replace their equipment that they have, that they've been using.
So, you're saying one camera is about $5,500?
Yes, sir.
And we got all of them for that?
You got 14 for that, yes, sir.
Wow. Good job.
It will, it will allow us to have video, and then we can use our JAG grant every year to replace stuff as it goes out.
Right, and you'll probably get more of my funds than the confiscated funds, so.
I would hope so.
That will work well.
So, in answer to Brian's question, roughly $50,000 to get the last eight.
Yes, sir.
And my understanding that we, those, those cameras last about four years, right?
Uh, these cameras are probably around three to three and a half years old. The cameras that we have are, are still operating and doing pretty good. We've got two monitors that are rolling that I'm gonna replace with this equipment from Harris County. That's the only problem I've had, and we just started having them.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second to, to purchase these cameras. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous, Judy. Thank you. Item number 14, consider work plan for the Habitat Macro Invertebrate and Fish Assessment for Cabin Creek, Potato Creek, and Shell Creek Watershed Basins by CCR Environmental Incorporated for the Stormwater and Wastewater Divisions of Public Works.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? All right, I have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous, Judy. Thank you.
This will be fun reading when it's done.
I think so.
Yeah, with vertebrates.
I, I know a lot of invertebrates. [laughing] In fact, I could name a right, a few right now if you'd like. Item number, okay, item number 15. Sorry about that. Consider the purchase of a Ford F-150 four-by-four pickup truck off state contract from Allen Vigil Ford in the amount of $21,860 for use at Cabin Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant, and authorize surplus of 1991 GMC to be sold on GovDeals.com.
I move we approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous. Thank you. Item number 16, consider approval of a poll management agreement contract with SWPI for the inspection and treatment of utility poles and to provide a report of all poles inspected and treated or rejected and needing replacement.
I move we approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, it is unanimous, Judy. Item number 17, consider approval to terminate the contract with Penn Credit Corporation for revenue recovery.
I'm gonna move we approve, but again, I have a question. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Okay, ask your question.
All right, we owe them $81,000, and I'm trusting that they brought in a whole lot more money than that. Is that the case?
That's correct. That's based on the 16 and a half percent that we owe them on the activity that we have received on all cases paid to the city of Griffin.
So, that's 16 and a half percent of what they collected?
That's correct.
I feel better about it now.
And then what are we gonna do? Who are we going to?
Do it ourselves.
You're gonna do it?
Yes, sir. The police department has a lot more leverage. We have, you know, the arrest and bench warrants, so they have a little bit more.
I would say they do have a lot of leverage.
Have a lot of leverage to go ahead and institute their own program.
Okay, we, we have a motion and a second.
We might be looking at another provider to do our utility accounts.
Oh, instead of police department?
Penn Credit did everything, and we ran into some confusing issues with the police department. So, the police department will do their own through the warrant division, but we'll probably be looking at another provider for utility account.
All right.
Did we do something before Penn Credit? I heard Penn Credit had been doing it for...
I thought that GMA did it at one point.
We, we had, well, Penn Credit was actually an affiliate recommended through GMA.
Yeah.
They just haven't performed like we had hoped they would. We had another company prior to Penn Credit that.
So, we've never really done it in-house before?
Not on utility accounts, we haven't.
Well, a policeman with a gun sounds to me like he could collect.
[laughing]
I, I, okay, I collect the utilities. Okay, but when somebody goes and do, I get the runoff and don't pay the bill. Um, you know, if they ever come back and want to apply again, we always, it don't matter how many thousand years it is, we, we gonna get the money. It was my understanding years ago that we wrote something off. What, what did we write off?
We wrote off a bunch of bad debt.
But we still, even after we've written bad debt off, and that person come back and wanna get utilities, we still go after them and get the money if they owe.
If, if, we have record of it, yes, ma'am.
Can you write it off and then still collect it?
Yeah, I think you can.
It's a recovery. It's a debt recovery, basically. That money is owed to the city. Even though we chose to write it off, we still have that legal recourse within the statute of limitations to go in and recover that money. And it's just a matter of a book entry to correct financial status.
Okay, so when we write off, we don't just write off one account, we write off every lot sum of whatever's owed?
It's a combination.
Pretty much.
Okay. Okay, did we vote? I have forgotten. All right, we have had discussion, and we've have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, it is 7-0, Judy. All right, item number 18, consider for approval a resolution to amend the general fund fiscal year 2011, 2012 operating budget in the amount of $42,711 for the use of FEMA grant funds. FEMA Grant Number EMW 2009 FO 11754 through the Department of Homeland Security DHS Fund, the Fire Department's Health and Safety Training and Partnership Program with the University of Georgia. The city of Griffin Board of Commissioners approved and accepted the FEMA grant funds on June the 8th, 2010.
Madam Chair, I move we amend the general fund as specified.
Right, we have a motion to amend the general fund. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Thank you. Kenny, does that mean we've received all of our funds that we, for our services?
No, that's different.
Have we received any?
This is a grant. This is not our tornado recovery money.
Oh, have we received that from FEMA yet?
We received the part that we filed separately through the electric department for our, for damage to our property. We have not been reimbursed by Spalding County for the work that we assisted them with.
Did we done them?
Well, yes, ma'am. It was my understanding, last I heard, they haven't received the funds.
If you don't open the envelope, I guess you can't receive them, can you? Okay, all right, Mr. Smith, city manager's report.
Yes, ma'am. A couple things for your calendar. On November the 1st, at 6:30, we're having a meeting with the Ashton Place neighborhood to discuss the beginnings of the park slash detention pond that we now own at the end of Ashton Place. So, we'll be meeting at the fire station on Crescent and hope that neighborhood will come over and.
You know that's my birthday. You know that's my birthday. I've already told Grant I'll expect a birthday cake.
Right, well, we'll have a party for it.
Yes, you got it.
Uh, uh, emailed you and I think you got also a hard copy on the UDC schedule that we talked about this morning, so if that meets with everybody's approval, if we can focus on those side discussions on those two meetings and break it up that way. Uh, Monday, CDBG two thousand and nine will begin construction. So if you see some construction over that way, uh, that's the two thousand and nine CDBG that we're starting on, uh, that you approved with Davidson to do that construction, I think at the last meeting. Uh, November the tenth, if you recall, uh, Army Private Faulkner, who was killed in Afghanistan on March twenty-ninth. Uh, there's a group of his, uh, fellow soldiers coming down. Twenty-two soldiers from Fort Campbell, Kentucky, along with their commanding officers and we'll have a, uh, uh, they'll make a presentation to Private Faulkner's family at the National Guard Army that day, so you'll be invited. We'll let you know exactly what time it will be in the afternoon on November the tenth.
You remember, I delivered a letter to them.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, and, uh, we're glad that they're coming to Griffin to make that presentation. And I just got notified prior to the meeting that the park at six, they received another award, the Keep Georgia Beautiful, uh, program will be awarding a community improvement and greening award for the park at six on November the fourteenth. So we'll be getting you some information on that as well.
Okay. And you will be out of town tomorrow through Saturday?
Be back on Friday.
Be back on Friday?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, learn something good.
I hope so.
And, and don't take any offers.
No, ma'am.
Drew?
I have nothing.
Okay. Commissioner Shahid?
Uh, do we, just of course, do we have a basis to, uh, honor the broadcast and to, uh, with-
That's usually in February, isn't it?
It's the second week of February of scouting. Uh, scout week, you can use your scout Sunday and things like that that happen on the second Sunday at churches and meetings.
Anything else?
No.
Okay.
Uh, this takes a couple minutes, but, uh, last summer at the, uh, annual convention, I went to two workshops. One was preserving historical sites and cemeteries, very interesting by the state director of historical preservation. And one was on marketing historic cemeteries for tourism by Bruce Green, our director of tourism in the state. Uh, so I took it upon myself to take that information and start trying to organize research, uh, on our historic cemeteries here in Griffin. Uh, my son Jeff has been helping me. He's the, he's really good with computers and research stuff. And, uh, we have been working on Stonewall Confederate Cemetery now for about six, eight weeks, eight weeks maybe, something like that. We're up to a hundred and twenty-five pages of research, of data on soldiers buried there. It's a fascinating study. We're trying to organize all this into booklet and CD form for tourism purposes. Uh, we have found two Medal of Honor winners there, uh, one Yankee, and we think there actually could be as many as four more Yankee soldiers buried there, which is interesting. Uh, one person of color is noted, a freedman who fought in the Confederacy. Uh, and just a lot of interesting information about the fellows buried there. And it turns out the Griffin Ladies Society was, takes upon themselves to go up to the battles throughout Atlanta during the war. The Battle of Atlanta was actually about a dozen big battles. Picking up dead soldiers and bringing them back to Griffin, burying them here in honor of them, so. Uh, week from Thursday at the Government Affairs, that's Thursday the third, seven-thirty. Uh, Jeff and I will be presenting a lot of our research to the Government Affairs Breakfast Chamber. And y'all invited, if you want to come to the Chamber of Government Affairs, I know Governor Mayor Todd comes sometimes and Doug does. And, uh, you can hear what we've learned about, uh, the men buried out there at Stonewall. It's pretty interesting. I think when we get done with this project, it'll be quite a tourist draw because Civil War history is, is, is pretty, uh, big. And also it ties into genealogy too about folks buried there, so.
Okay, thank you. Doug?
We'd like to thank staff. Uh, Dr. October Day happened this past weekend and from reports from citizens and employees that were involved, um, great job, the staff that helped out, thank you. And Spalding County Fair was a big success and wanted to thank, um, Chief and Tommy for y'all's, um, staff that were out there, were either working or volunteering. And everybody else that was working with Spalding County Fair, great job, appreciate it.
I think Tommy was probably volunteering, chief's staff got paid.
Chief, right, but, but chief's guys always do a professional job. Glad to help, thank you.
Ryan?
All right, I just want to, uh, I meant to do this last meeting, but I want to thank Kenny for, for getting this report. I don't know if you guys looked at the summary report that basically he put together and I think it's excellent. I, I was really impressed with what you guys put together and the amount of detail, but in this nice summary fashion, I can easily tell, you know, the pace of last year, crimes are, you know, slower right now, it's, it's less. And, uh, now, of course, I looked down my favorite area, the substandard structure is demolished and, uh, I'd say the seven and the twenty-one year to date. And, uh, and that was, I, I'm assuming this is fiscal year today? Is it from?
Calendar.
Calendar. Year to date, okay, so we've had twenty-one, but we had seven this past month. And, uh, whereas, uh, in the prior year, we had nine and, and one in that, in that month, so that's, that's impressive. But basically the detail that you guys, of course, I know we get this detail in a separate kind of format, but being able to reference this is excellent and I, I really appreciate you guys putting this together.
Thank you.
That it?
Yes.
Will?
Yeah, I would like to take the time to come in, uh, Chief Strickland. Uh, at the last meeting, we had, had problems back over, uh, around Fourth Street, Tinsley, and also N A Street. He had the job, he got the job done. Uh, most likely he spoke with his troop and they was in there for those three or four days. And you see the difference that it made. She'll become, Ms. uh, Smith, you did it now, stand as you are.
Okay, thank you, Will. Cynthia? Okay, Saturday night, I was fortunate to represent the Board of Commissioners for the sixtieth anniversary of the Lions Club. And, uh, I was telling Judy this morning that sometimes we think, you know, all civic, well, of course, all civic clubs at Griffin do a great job for our, jobs for our community, especially for volunteering and paying for services. But at that particular meeting, they had three Griffin, Spalding County residents who had benefited from having surgery. Uh, one lady, a young woman in her thirties, had double cataracts on both eyes with no health insurance. She had basically lost her vision and she was re, uh, presented to the local Lions Club and they not only put her in touch with, uh, a surgeon, they paid for it. And so what was interesting was she was one of our servers Saturday night. And, uh, it was very emotional and then we had an older gentleman from Orchard Hill who came and he had had a son that was, uh, that had benefited from the Lions Club. And then we had a Spalding High student who was there in a wheelchair who had also benefited from the Lions Club and their vision program. Uh, so they celebrated with around, uh, fifty to sixty-five people in attendance. And it's another instance of where in our community, when someone knocks on your door and they want you to buy a broom or a light bulb so someone else can see, you need to do it. Uh, and it's, it's also good to give out the report on someone who does, the Qantas Club also has a budget for, for glasses and things like that. We have many needs in our community. We could not serve these needs without the civic clubs of Griffin. Having said that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And a second. All in favor? Aye? We are adjourned.